I see.
You're being very shorty now.
Really? They're saying Leroy instead of Leroy?
Yeah, I asked about the Leroy laws and she said it's Leroy.
Oh, wow.
And ever since then.
It you.
You've been correct on that.
I I actually, I don't know. Maybe a Jerry Smith question. I I don't know. Who the?
Leroy from Leroy Street is.
Can you hear us, Sarah?
I can, yes.
There we go.
Sorry, hey. Just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a.
Double double check if Councilman Middleton is on our way. If she. It shows up, it shows up.
All right.
Um, it's. One thirty. Let's call this meeting to order. This is a planning. Mini-meeting. Of the council. It's one thirty Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Do a roll call.
Councilmember Hopkins.
President.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton is absent. We also have an intendant, Tito Martinez from the planning department, and Sarah Glose from the economic development.
Thank you. Alright, so our first item is RL twenty-four dash one fifty-two. Um, this is an ordinance to amend chapter four ten to alter housing density. Uh, this was submitted by Councilman Kavanaugh. So do you want to talk about this one, or do you want to skip it completely?
Well, I think the goal is to. Mush the got the the two of them, the two of them into one. And I think I think it's. Would be useful to here to to kind of hash out with with the. With Tito, the uh. Mine was. Submit with the idea of. Using the box side, the box and stuff to. Do control for townhouses and we're changing the bulk requirements, so that's. An issue. But part of the what needs to carry over, I think, is the this consideration of the ownership structure that is, I don't think is covered in. It is so. Um, I think we're both working towards similar goals and like we just have some bits and pieces to. Work through.
Yeah, you had uh condominiums and cooperatives for the.
Uh, I'll suit. Correct, and in fact, it's important, right? Co-op would probably be a more uh. Kind of. It's probably a bit more useful structure for some of these, so. I think we need to. Try and include that. Um, but yeah, I I we can, you're just kind of pushing this. Look, you know.
For. For the co-op issue. I don't think anybody uh is opposed to that. Just that it didn't know enough about it and we don't have any in the city, so with condos, we have a couple.
Right.
So we're comfortable just putting that in there because it's already permitted. But again, we're not opposed to putting co-ops in there. We can sort of do a little research and and then we just have to.
Is this something we should run by appropriation council for? If there's anything weird around co-ops that.
Yeah, and like maybe county real property to see like what the tax structure is for that. Uh, but I I think. You know, if we decide to that including it is the best thing to do, I think it'd be fairly simple to just. Uh, we would define it in the zoning ordinance and then say for the purposes of this chapter. Co-op and condominiums shall be one of your thing, and then we don't really have to do more beyond that.
Okay. Is there currently any like restrictions on cooperatives in the city? Or is it just there's no? Model to.
There are none. Um. There are none, and you know, for that reason, we don't really know what we would call them. Whether we would call them a multi-unit dwelling or not. If we call them a multi-unit dwelling, then then. They'd just be allowed where multi-unit buildings are allowed. If we want that to be included in the R one in R two, then we need to do a little more work around there.
I mean, I think for purposes of of this, yes, yeah.
Okay.
But I think that's the the distinction we're sort of creating.
The main difference being that the condominium owners own their unit and then they share expenses from common areas to co-op.
Kind of on shares in the building.
Correct, yeah, so it's. So it's like multiple. Owners for a building. But then structurally, the building is. Is a multi-unit building, so it's like it's it just needs a little more thought, I think. But I don't think it's, you know. I don't think that including costs is a real great way in any way. Oh, Sarah, the would you agree? I don't know if she can hear.
I think she said she could hear.
Okay.
Sarah. I just give me one second and then I can I can chime back in apologies.
Okay.
Sure. And I see that Kenya's there as well, so.
Hi, Kenya.
I think the.
Kenya, you're breaking up, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello.
Okay.
The. Other thing that I think, I mean. We're gonna get to it in a minute here, but I. I feel like the. Having the bulk requirements be the restriction makes more sense to me than just limiting the number of townhouses on a lot size. Um, I think. The. Lot size should be the determining factor and not.
Well.
So if it's just like a huge lot that you could potentially fit six, I don't. See why you would need to restrict it to three. I think that that's my understanding of what how you have it laid out.
So so townhouses have smaller lot sizes. So townhouses are going to be defined as each one being individually owned. And they have a smaller lot size. And and zero foot side setbacks to allow.
Purposes, but we might have a townhouse that's. Cooperative, but that is a co-op.
Okay.
So that's where this is rubbing, I think.
So in that case. The way it's laid out right now. You can have a co-op where each individual building would meet the bulk requirements if it was on its own block. With the townhouse co-ops. You could do that as long as. Like in the R one, we have it where. You could have up to three attached. So in this co-op development, let's say it's like two a two-acre thing. With. I don't know, twelve units on it. You would have this site. That's made up of clusters of three townhouses, because that's how they would otherwise be allowed to be developed in our direction. So. So condos and if we do co-ops, co-ops would be allowed in all these districts, but. But. Physically, and how they're built out, they have to be built out, you know. In a way that resembles other types of housing that's allowing that dish that extends. So townhouse co-ops would be allowed. Except that in the in the R one. You could attach up to three, and the R two. You could attach up to six. Then the R three, you could. There's no limit. And those individual. Rows of townhouses. You could have multiple of those on your co-op site.
So hypothetically, if you're in an R one. And then there's like a big house, huge lot. There's terrible fire, it gets demolished, and now it's an empty lot. You couldn't go in then and make like a row of townhouses.
You could do up to three. On that large lot. Or now that the. Uh, minimum lot sizes would be smaller. You could subdivide that into multiple lots now. And in that way, get more units per lot. But on each on each lot, we would make sure that there's setback requirement between those clusters of townhouses. United seeing the lot coverage, you have the parking, et cetera, for each one of those lots. So so. With that large double lot and the big house burning down in that scenario. You can you can do more now in two ways. It's one being you can do townhouses, uh more townhouses there, because right now you can only do two, but we get a lot more. The other being because it's a much smaller minimum lot size. You can uh subdivide that into multiple lots. And potentially get even more townhouses. In there, um then if we were to just allow. Five attached on one lot. Right? Because you can get more lots, and so you can get more clusters of three.
So is it? Is there any reason to avoid having the need of subdividing or is it just? It's easy enough that it shouldn't be a. Consideration.
Subdividing, if if you're doing four lots or less is easy. It's just a, it's a. Sort of a real estate process and you work with the accessory and real property. If you're doing more than four lots, then there's a subdivision review process. Which is. Much more involved and something that we really need to look at. The complaint says we need to revise it and just having had a chance to do it.
When the last time somebody tried to plan a subdivision thing? In living memory?
Um, we have had. We had one up on the south side. I don't know, maybe three or four years ago. Uh, it didn't move forward. There was a lot of opposition from neighbors up there. Which was kind of valid because it was it was like stormwater away. It was up on a hill and. The amount of pavement involved in the subdivision. Would have had an impact down there, but. But they're rare.
Hey, guys, I was able to listen to all of that. I just couldn't talk before. Apologies. Tito, what was your question for me, or are we all good?
I I had said that. As far as I know, including co-ops in this is not some sort of deal breaker. It's just we didn't do it ourselves because. We don't have any models in Binghamton and we don't really know what that would look like. But that's something that we could look at further.
Yep, that's correct, and I agree. I heard you guys talking about bringing it to corp council, and I think that's probably the right um next step.
And I guess. Do you just wanna, I sort of want to go line by line through this, if that's if that's. Maybe too thorough, I. But I want to under, I want to make sure I understand everything. But so I'm just gonna look at your pro-housing plan. Now, decrease the minimum lot in all districts where housing is permitted. This would facilitate subdividing lots to be. With built more housing. And then.
I'm sorry, real quick. What what areas do you think this would mostly impact? Um, is there? Have you thought about how each of these maps onto? Different districts?
Most of the city has relatively small lots. I think the. The bigger lots are probably on the south side. So that there's the greatest potential for change there. I will say a lot of those massive lots on the south side are undeveloped, though, and so. You know. I did your question before was when was the last time someone tried to subdivide? Uh, just to clarify, the last time someone tried to do a subdivision that requires subdivision review was that one, but there had been. Every year, there's a couple smaller subdivisions where somebody splits a lot in half or.
Right, we're right. Yeah, I meant that larger process.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so. But yeah, the west side, first ward, uh north side, they all have. You know, relatively smaller sized lots, and they're already fairly dense. But there, on the west side, there's certainly lots that. That now can be cut in half. If we amend this, that. Currently do not, maybe.
Are you, yeah, I don't know.
Moving on.
Yeah, moving on. I guess the second point is that increase allowable lot coverage in all districts where housing is permitted. To allow for the construction of larger buildings and facilitate subdividing lots to be able to build more housing. Yeah. Maybe it makes more sense to go to the. The actual text amendment.
So with that, I mean, if you subdivide a lot. Now we are, we allow smaller lots. On that new smaller lot, you would be allowed to cover more ground to be able to build. A house the size that the. Perspective owner wants, or in the case of multiple units. You can cover more ground to get more units built. Versus, you know, having to reserve that, you know, it's just uncoverable.
And then the your your table here is. Is this like? By right? Or is it? You can get variances on this through. Some process.
So this is the default, and if you need to do something that does not meet these requirements, then you can go to the zoning board. So like in the example from the email. Where I said, if there's a lot. There's a really small lot where setback requirements make a building impossible. You can go to the zoning board. To be able to build right up to the property line or whatever you need to do. And in that case, the property owner would have a strong case, because if the bulk requirements make it so that they cannot develop their lot. That's a real hardship, and so. For the rare cases where. A setback requirement will make it so that no building can be built if you have like some really tiny lot. Uh, you can go to the zoning board and say, okay, I need to build all the way up to the eastern property line so I could get this. Tiny home or whatever kind of building you're trying to build. And. In that case, it's EBA. Unless there's some major egregious issue. Would probably allow that, because otherwise you have to code make rendering somebody's property useless to be, you know, you can't do that.
Gotcha. So have the increased allowable height in R three and commercial districts. Is that, has that been a constraint? Previously for? Developers or is that is?
It has been, it uh it has been, uh but they've had to get variances, and for the most part, they get granted. Uh, but it is, it can be a constraint. Um, I just. For larger developments, uh to make the numbers work, sometimes they need to add more units. There's not always land available to add those units, you know, horizontally, so they need to go higher. Then this would allow them. Yeah, it was the case with the. Y W C A project. On. Where the urban league building is. They needed a height variance. One eighty-seven Plant Street needed a height variance. And even, you know, Marjorie stuff like fifth in front needed a height variance. They they almost all did.
So. Does this change? Encompass those buildings? Would this encompass those buildings?
Uh, yes.
Or are we just making a not quite not quite enough change that it would?
It would. Um. I can get you a definitive answer, but I'm pretty sure, yeah, that's.
Because I mean, that's clearly a type of building that's getting built these days. Essentially.
They're all kind, they were all kind of different. It just, it's just the number of units you need to make your project cancel out. I know it's pretty high in Binghamton, I guess. Just because of the rents, even though, you know, we know they're high. And they're not affordable for a lot of people. The cost of construction is so insane that they need hot more revenue to make the construction, so they need to get more units set usually. Because the rents can't go any higher.
So with the heights, does that have any impact on fire?
Uh, so once you go past, I think, four stories, you're you're kicked into a different code. And so at that point, I would think, you know, the higher you can go, the better. If you're gonna meet, if you're gonna be meeting this more restrictive code anyway.
Okay.
But is, uh, so you've read, we're adding fifteen feet for the the R three from forty-five to sixty. Um, and then throughout the commercial, you're adding. Either ten or fifteen. And if that's enough, just like. It's pretty much one floor.
Yeah, so C one would be adding a story. Uh, C three, we'd be adding a story. Yeah, basically, a a a story, an additional story in every district. Except downtown in Neighborhood Office. Neighborhood Office, because that is supposed to look residential. That's the intent of that district. And C two will be considered ready of any twenty feet.
Right. Increase it. You know, go on the next one, the simplify and decrease setbacks in R three and commercial districts. You touched on that a little bit. That's just like the distance it is from the. Road. Right? And other, another. Other.
And be the the distance from your building to any given property line. So side ones.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are there specific areas of? Town that. More likely to be impacted?
Are there specific parts of town that would be more impacted? I don't know, maybe the R threes in theory, because. It's a. It's a significant reduction there. It's side setbacks. But if you go to our R threes. Like on the west side, uh. You know, between St. John and. Smoke. And Norfolk, Maine. Parts of the north side, et cetera. You rarely have. A property with ten feet on one side and twenty feet on the other side. That that's. That's. That level separation between buildings is is very uncommon in the R three, so bringing it down to five and fifteen. Brings it closer to what is actually there in that that district, so. That's one of the bigger changes, but I don't think it'll have a a significant impact on the ground in multiple cities, except where people are building new. Multi-units in the R three. The C one, in the commercials, the side setbacks. We reduce the side setbacks in the C five and C six. To much smaller setbacks because they are commercial. And in a lot of our commercial districts, we have no setback department at all. We allow attached buildings.
I don't actually see the. Change in setbacks for the R three.
That it's cut off. Um. It's. This page here, so. This is R one. Or two. Or three. So the side setback, this is the change.
But not the back. Not the rear, the rear setback or not?
No, for for more dense, um.
Sorry, you should clarify, is it off on the packet or?
It's the, no, the way that I printed mine. Uh, yours may have printed the same, but there's the same document, but. It's not cut off, it just goes in, there's a page where it's archetypal, but.
I mean, I'm trying to think.
The rear setback was twenty feet. That's pretty typical in in commercial areas and more dense areas. The purpose of that is historically is to try to get. Um, behind buildings like in downtowns and so on. An alley for emergency services. So they they try to reserve space at the back of the building. And allow buildings to be up to the street in the front and allow buildings to be attached on the side. But you have access in the back if you have to ever get a fire ladder in there or something like that, so. That that's why we didn't touch the rear setbacks, but. Um, that's the reason for the twenty-four.
If the historical. Is related to like the downtown area and then R three is not really. In the downtown at all, does that? Make sense to?
It's not, but it would allow larger buildings. It would allow buildings the size of which a lot of our downtown is made up of, you know, and so. You know, we just thought it made sense to have, if you can build a six-story building. Uh, relatively close to the next six-story building in the R three, which you could. Then it makes sense to have that alley back there. You know, I don't know, twenty feet is 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 generous. I guess if you could go, you know.
I think about the front setbacks in R one, I'm trying, I can go around with it. Measuring tape and see how many. Of the older houses on the side or the first ward even meet fifteen feet from the front property line. Before you hit. Do porches count in that?
Uh, covered porches do. There is an exception for. I don't know if you want to call it an exception, but the code says that. Uh, you can have your building as close to the street. As the average of the two neighboring buildings. So where you have. Uh, houses already pretty close to the street and you're gonna build a new one, you would be allowed to to take you sort of that row of houses. You wouldn't have to push it fifty feet back. But if if somebody were to subdivide undeveloped, then those would have to meet that front setback.
Okay. We still going line by line?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I just kind of got stuck.
Question here. Um, so is. R R three is the same thing in terms of looking at the zoning map as residential multi-unit dwelling.
Correct, yep.
Because I I'm like, I was just walking second at. Yesterday, and they have, that's that zoning there, and they definitely, like, there's some of those. Developments that are kind of down in, and then you have the houses kind of up on the street and. That's kind of a a funky. Street in terms of setbacks and things. Yeah. I don't know, I'm just trying to like visualize who this impacts. It's a mix of single-family homes, big complexes, and like. Multi-family regular buildings.
I know, like. So if there's. You have a garage at the back of your part, your property, and then your neighbor also has one at the back of theirs. You got your twenty feet.
So for in the, yeah, so in the R districts, accessory buildings have to be five feet of property.
Okay.
Yeah, and it can't be in the front yard.
So it's not. So, alright.
This is.
That's kind of like where my head was, because like I know I've. There's been like places that I know are like just three feet.
Yeah, yeah, that's like. So, yeah, for.
There are places that are literally connected.
Yeah. Yeah. In residential districts, the accessory building, accessory residential buildings have different requirements. They can be five feet from the parking line. Side and rear, they can't be in the front yard, but you can't put a shed in the front yard. In commercial districts, all the buildings on that lot are treated the same as part of that land use. In residential districts. Sheds and garages and gazebos. Can be closer to parking them.
Okay. That's.
So this kind of segues into the accessory dwelling units, perhaps.
Yes.
Um, I'm. Um, I'm, I don't know how many people in things who are going to. Take advantage of this or not, but since we're talking about hypotheticals. Possible useful things, I, um, um. The definition of the size, I think, is a little too small and. We are changing, are we changing it from the fact that it has to be attached or not? Uh, most of the like garages and stuff are not attached, I think. Maybe on the south side, yeah, south side, but.
Uh, in the R one, it would have to still be attached, in the R two and R three, it may. Have one or more exterior entrances or maybe attached with principal dwelling.
I think I disagree with that.
Okay.
Is, what's the reasoning that it has to be attached?
Uh, because if it's detached and it has a kitchen, a bathroom. And, you know, sleeping quarters, then it is, it's by all definitions, it's a dwelling unit. And then now you have more than one dwelling unit on a lot, and that's not allowed in the.
But that's the whole purpose of the accessory dwelling unit. Right?
This would allow this accessory dwelling unit to to exist in the R one and it's really accessory to the main building. Um, it's, it's not a standalone unit.
Yeah, but I don't think the fact that a bill that the, we're talking about basic garage first, I don't think the garage conversion. Whether it's cat detached or attached. Makes the difference, you're adding a person and more use to that property, I don't think, if we're allowing attached garage, right? So if I, if I have a three hundred and twenty-five square foot attached garage in the R one.
The reason.
I can make that an apartment for somebody, but if it's detached, I can't, that doesn't seem fair, honestly.
The reasoning for why it has to be attached is is to kind of structurally ensure that it's all part of the same household. And that's a requirement in the R one is that you have one household per lot.
But that's not the goal of the accessory dwelling unit.
Well, you're, I mean, you're talking about like a mother-in-law apartment.
Correct, so a mother-in-law apartment is allowed in the R one. A separate dwelling unit on a lot is not allowed in the R one, cause that's, that's now a two family lot. What's that?
That you can't have two dwelling, two separate dwellings. In the R one.
Not necessarily, but that is the, that is like the entire basis of the R one without.
I I get that, but if if we're supposed to be trying to increase density and flexibility of usage. Uh, but if if I have two houses right next to each other and one has an attached garage, one has a detached garage. In the R one, one person can effectively build an apartment and the other person can, in their garage.
They could build an addition and put an accessory dwelling unit in there.
The distinction is that it can't have a separate en- en- um, entrance, Rob, so you have to access the accessory unit through the main household. So you wouldn't be able to create a unit that has its own entrance in the R one.
Yes, so you're not creating an additional apartment for for some unrelated person.
But that's the goal of the accessory dwelling. Legislation in general, right, the movement for accessory dwelling units is to create additional rentable space.
That, yeah, that's the movement, I guess nationally, um. If that's something that we wanna do to basically nullify the R one, that that's a bigger conversation, um. While this does not create a separate private apartment for someone to rent out.
It does the R two and R three.
It, it could, yes, it it, what it does do in reality, it's a, it allows people, for example, seniors. To downsize and live with their family, it allows uh, young people who can't afford to buy a house.
Only if the house of their child has an attached garage, not if it has a detached garage.
I also wanna be clear that, I also wanna be clear that in the R two, if you already have two units on the property, you would not be able to build an ADU. So you, the ADU is, has to be in line with how many units are allowed on the property total, um, it's not just an addition to whatever is already there.
Right, that that too, but but like, so it's hard right now for young people to buy homes. This would allow a young person to have a private space in their family home.
As long as it's an attached product.
So, obviously, it's easier if you have an attached garage, it'll save you money on the construction of this ADU. Uh, cause you just have to remodel the interior, uh, but it's not as if, if you don't have an attached garage, you cannot build an ADU. You can still build it. Uh, you could still put an addition on your house, you could still convert a part of the existing footprint to an ADU. Uh, this is not sort of a blanket ban on ADUs if you don't have an attached garage, there's still a lot of options to do that. And you still are providing housing for people, they just are related to the other people that live in the main house.
I'm, I'm kind of with Robert on on this one, uh, I feel like the in R one, R one has like the greatest opportunity for ADUs. For adding adding units relative to R two and R three. And if we're, if the goal is really to be adding adding units that are increasing housing stock and flexibility, I think. Like having them be detached and also having them not necessarily be the same family member, I think that's. That meets that goal more, but I know, but right now, it's just like this, what we have here, like preserves neighborhood. Really strongly, but if we're, if the goal is to instead to like maximize housing stock. Thing, having it detached and allowing for unrelated peoples on the same lot. So, so that, that's, that's my priority, um.
That, and that obviously would create more units.
Well, it has the potential to create more units, we have not had demand, we have not had a lot of asks for this type of housing, it's really more of a um, preparation.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of people looking to build ADUs that can't, um. Allowing detached ADUs that are rentable to non-household members in the R one. Just to be clear, eliminates the R one as a district. So, so that would, the R one would go away and would become an R two. The city of Binghamton would not have a single unit dwelling district. Uh, and that's something that. Uh, you know, I, I can't speak for the mayor, I'm assuming that he would not be in favor of that.
And I don't believe that many of the residents in the R one would be in favor of that either.
A lot of the constituents would not want that as well, uh, which, you know, matters, obviously. So it's just a matter of of, just definitions.
While we're on ADUs, Tito, can you talk a little bit about how functionally we have allowed ADUs? And this is really just clarifying language because it wasn't um, explicitly spelled out in the code.
Right, yeah, right now.
I mean, you could build an addition on your house and put another kitchen there, I mean, it's not, how would that be disallowed now, wouldn't be. Plenty of Jewish households, yeah, two kitchens, plenty of Italian households have two kitchens, that's not.
No, I just, so, so for instance, we had a request in the R three, or maybe it was in the R two or a two family, that they wanted to build an ADU in the back. The only restriction was that it would have added an additional unit above and beyond what their zoning district. Allowed, um, under the code, it would have been allowed, it just wasn't super clear. So if you were reading it, you know, as a homeowner trying to see what your options were, you wouldn't necessarily see that path illuminated before you. Although technically, in the way that we interpret the code, it was functionally allowed, so this is just really clarifying that people have this right.
Right, the way.
I mean, I think it makes it look like we're adding an accessory dwelling unit law to encourage. Infill development essentially, and we're not really doing that at all.
We're clarifying that, because right, right now, if somebody were looking, can I build an ADU, it's, it's not really clear whether you can or can't.
I'm saying that nationally definition, there the the impression of an ADU versus a mother-in-law apartment is. That, 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 sort of, the, the common understanding of the term has shifted, if you will.
It has shifted, yeah, in the national conversation, where in places where there's extreme housing pressure, these mother-in-law suites have now become. Units that that are separate, uh, leasing both to separate people and need a housing. We don't have that pressure for ADUs in Binghamton, um. So, do we wanna take a drastic step of eliminating our our single unit housing? Uh, when the pressure for ADUs isn't there, um. There is a need for quality affordable housing in Binghamton, but. There aren't any. We have not seen, uh, demand from developers or homeowners to meet that need. Through it, through ADUs, um, we really need more multi-u, quality multi-unit dwellers.
Agreed, right, and so we set that entire discussion, we have two houses in R one that are next to each other, but. One with an attached garage, one with a detached garage. One can turn their attached garage into an ADU, the other one cannot. So, for their mother-in-law, for entirely the stated purpose of 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 this, so. Is there even a way to just say, since it's not, you're not allowed to increase. The rentable number of dwelling units, but a detached ADU. Must be, still meet the functional family requirement for the entire property, so.
We could try to put that in there operationally, that becomes. Very difficult to enforce and that gets added to the already like monumental student housing issue with the functional family.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I mean.
This structurally sort of helps to enforce itself. Because most people don't want unrelated tenants walking through their house to get to the, to the mother-in-law. So i- it's a, it's a way structurally to ensure that what we're, what the intent of this gets met. Um, and again. I understand what you're saying with the garage issue, but there's, there's more, more ways to get an ADU than than with the garage, um.
Right, but I mean, there's no reason to call it an ADU, standing in addition on your house or enclosing a porch, you need to be.
I think that's a conversation we could have with legal because I think it goes back to how we've historically decided, defined accessory. Dwelling and accessory dwelling units and accessory buildings, um, cause Rob, to your point, what ADUs are defined as nationally, I think differs slightly from the way that we have. Defined them, so I think there, there may be some cascading um, effects you would have to look into with corporation council if we were to adjust those definitions.
Well, I, 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 I think there's state law implications too, yes, there's, there's, there's been a push from state, uh, ADUs.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure that's sort of the platform at the state level is to encourage allowing them, um.
Re-rentable units, essentially.
In places where there's a demand for, yeah, ADUs to become separately.
And this is anecd- this is anecdotal, so, um. Don't take it with a grain of salt, but I know they did a pilot program in the Hudson Valley where they had a design contest about, you know, designing ADUs. And then they were offering grants to folks to build that design on their property. They found something like ninety percent of the ADUs that were built were rented to family members, so functionally, we're seeing that ADUs. Um, while they can be added as rental units, and I'm sure that is um, a desire for some folks, functionally, uh, these do tend to go to family members.
Right, so if it's like, if, if the trend is that they do go that way, why not have the flexibility for them?
Go the other way?
Yeah.
And again, and why?
I think to Tito's point, it's just an operational staff power for us to be able to check that.
And so why don't we go back to the. This three hundred and twenty-five square foot thing. If I have the lot size and I put a five hundred dollar, a five hundred foot addition on my house. Why would I just put five hundred foot addition on my house, why would I be?
Uh, to be completely honest with you, I don't know why three twenty-five, um, that could be something where like the residential building code calls. It's catching accessory dwelling in there three twenty-five, we can look at that, I don't, I don't think if you can meet setback requirements, lock coverage requirements, why you should put a cap on it. Um, so I can look at where that might change some, whether there's flexibility in it.
And then, um, now I'm just thinking backwards, so, uh, the, in your four ten dash five terms define. Um, you haven't switched the, you haven't changed the townhouse definition, one of the things I'm doing is changing the townhouse definition, so essentially we can. We should, I like to look at and, um, so it has to do with, that has to do with the ownership and.
Yeah.
Also the structure perhaps of of a townhouse.
Right.
Uh, we are strictly, we currently strictly limit the design attempt, has to be, the entire should almost be from. Top to bottom, and we have lots that might work out with a different structure possibly. Well, I think.
But I think, I think. I think that goes to the ownership though, because, I mean, I could, this may be something that I just need to explore more, but I don't know how you would do different ownership between a first story and a second story. And maybe that goes to your co-op model that would.
It would be co-op and not, and not condo necessarily, I know, there's condos in the country, story, by rivers I drive.
In that case, that that's a, um. That would be a multi-unit dwelling and that would be allowed. In certain districts, you have multiple stories with.
Right, but not, 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 uh, not R one, we're relying three ten.
So because right now you own the land and the building, and I think, Rob, your model, you might not necessarily own the land or you might own the land collectively. So that may facilitate that, but I think right now, because you're owning the the land itself and the building it's on. Your entire property would need to exist on that lot.
Right, so that's why I'm posting a different model.
Townhouses are are gonna be defined as individually owned, so each one has its own parcel. In your, in your scenario that you're talking about.
You may have three townhouses and a lot.
Right.
And they're going to be co- owned by.
So that would then be defined as a condominium, and it would be allowed where condominiums are are allowed. So townhouse is defined as si- as a single dwelling unit, but.
But we don't have co-op at all.
If we, if we allow co-ops, then we would roll into the the definition of condo. And the condo in townhouse shape would would be allowed in the R one. I'm trying to find a way to, there, there's no conflict, I'm just trying to find a way to like articulate that, it's, it's, if. If it's individually owned, it'll be called a townhouse and then there are restrictions around how to build that. If it's owned as a co-op or it's a rental.
We would have to add.
Multi-unit dwelling or condo and condo rules would apply or multi-unit dwelling rules would apply.
So this again, maybe is like, i- is it better to add co-op under terms defined or somehow roll co-op into condominium?
I, I think it makes sense to, to, we can define co-op, but then, uh, and there's other uses.
But I see the functionally, a co-op widget.
So we could define co-op and then, and then say here that for the purposes of chapter four ten. Co-ops and condominiums shall be, when I say, we have other uses like that, where it's like.
Right.
You know, warehouse is defined, but for the purposes of the chapter, it's called light industrial. You know, so that all these different things that are light industrial are just called light industrial, so that where we list the allowed uses, we don't have to list. You know, a dozen different things in that list. So we could define, again, define co-op and say that it's a condo, right in the co-op definition, in the condo definition. Say this includes co-ops just so that, you know, it's cross-referenced. And then when you wanna build townhouses with the co-op ownership structure, that's, that's now gonna be allowed. Uh, in the R one and R two, again, as lo- within those constraints of a cluster of three or so on.
And then to Tito's point, if you, what you really want to build was a multi-unit, um, that was co-opted or condo-wise in some way, then that would follow those rules and regulations.
Right. Well, so i- i- if it, if it's, so if it's individually, I'll, I'll try to break it down as simply as possible. If it's individually owned, it's a townhouse, if it's owned as a condo or a co-op. It's gonna be following the condo rules, if they're rentals, then it'll fall in their multi-unit dwelling news.
That. Makes.
For for a townhouse style.
Okay, yes, that's a default.
Just say it one more time.
If you're building townhouses.
Okay.
Uh, if they're individually owned, private residences. Each, each townhouse unit, um, on its own lot, so on its own, like, especially narrow lot that we allow for townhouses. That'll be defined as a townhouse and the townhouse rules will would apply, meaning wherever the code says in this district, the townhouse is allowed. And you can have this many, uh, that's for individually owned townhouses. If you have a, a row of townhouses that are co-op or a condo association. Then those would be allowed where condos are allowed and you have to meet the rules that apply to condos in any given district. If you have a row of townhouses where each one is a rental unit, that's a multi-unit dwelling and that's allowed where multi-unit dwellings are allowed. Yeah, you have to meet the rules of that district.
I think that's good one, makes sense to me.
But now I'm making that condominium subject to four ten twenty-nine D, which is what? But now I'm making that condominium subject to four ten twenty-nine D, which is what?
Sorry, if I have to rewind a second here, um but if you, so if I, people have a single family home and they rent it in an R one. Are they not allowed to do that?
I meant rentals as in the whole thing is one lot and each townhouse is an apartment.
Okay.
Yeah, if, yeah, any any single family house can be rented, there's no restriction on.
So if if you had that first model where everyone owns their own thing, then you could be in. An area that allows for townhouses and each of those individual people could rent that place.
Correct, like uh.
And that would be fun, okay.
I used to live on Murray, there's a row, very nice townhouses on Murray and. Meadow, no, sorry, Dickinson. Half of them were older occupied, half of them were renters, and there's there's no restriction on renting a single family house in in the Bronx District.
So four ten twenty-nine, in the case of attached town-style house condominiums, the town has to have requirements that apply, so. The building style is treated agnostically between those, I think, so I think that works.
Yeah, so you could have like in the R one, you could have a condo site, like for Oak as an example. Uh, where there's a bunch of units and they have to either. Be townhouses that meet the townhouse rules for the R one, which is clusters of no more than three, or they have to look like detached, single-family houses that are allowed in the R one. In the R two, you could have, I think it was up to five. Clusters of up to five, or they can be duplexes, which would be allowed in the R two. And then in the R three, you could have high-rise condos, anything that's a high-rise condos. Because a a multi-story building is already allowed in the R two.
Want to get into parking now? So I guess my first question about parking is, does, do these rules apply like retroactively or is it only for new development? So is. If there is this like senior housing right now, they can just get rid of their parking lot, like if this were to go through.
Uh, I guess, like in. In practice, it it does apply retroactively. I mean, technically, the answer is this applies to new developments, but when someone wants to make a change to their approved site plan. For an exist, like if you have an existing senior housing development, they wanna cut their parking in half to build a garden or whatever. They could go to the planning commissions and now they'd be subject to the new rule, which is allows less parking, so. I guess, yeah, in practice, like.
Or just less to pay.
It's uh, you can modify an existing lot to get rid of parking there, if this gets adopted, yes.
So I think, yeah, I think that makes the the implications greater in my mind um than just like the having it be like new.
Yeah.
New development only, so that they.
I only.
That's kind of exciting.
The only reason I don't say that it is like a hundred percent retroactive is because if you're gonna make a big change like that to your site, you do need some level of review. So it's not like you could automatically just cut your parking lot in half without any sort of review or permit, you still need to. Get that approval, but now it's approvable because we're cutting the number, we're reducing it.
Yes.
And I guess the. Only, I lost the spot, but it. Why not just get rid of the requirement altogether?
It's that just like a major, major change that is something that would be a better fit for like a zoning overhaul versus. You know, we were trying to just focus on housing, or so getting rid of it or slashing it for housing. Was kind of the focus here, if you wanna get, and there are just too many different uses. Where we have to decide, do we really wanna require no parking at all for use X? Like, uh, one example that comes to mind is congregant living. Which in a lot of cases is like a euphemism for student housing. If we get rid of the parking requirement for that. Places like like Murray between Ayers and Maine, let's say. It's all, there are, there are practical implications to this, it's it's not just about the convenience, like in suburban codes, they want like huge parking lots. It in the urban core of the city, if you don't have options for people to get their cars off the street. Then they're all on the street and then it becomes difficult to plow and run street sweepers. Uh, and for fire trucks to get through. So, you know, I personally am in favor of. Having minimal to no parking requirements personally, but I understand that it's probably smart to kind of take it slow and see. Kind of use by use. Do we wanna eliminate the parking for this, for each given use? They for affordable housing and senior housing, it's a no-brainer. Uh, because there's such a need for that type of housing and we're willing to sort of take the risk and just say, forget parking, we need to do what we can and get these basements built. Um, for for the other uses where it's less urgent to kind of change that. I mean, we've done a lot, like for existing buildings, you don't need parking if you're under four thousand square feet. For that given use, the downtown doesn't need parking unless it's for congregant living. We have a parking maximum. Uh, so. And we're, we're moving in that direction.
Got you, um, the, I I don't think I noticed this before, but it uh you have affordable housing, one to four bedrooms, so if it's. Like ten, ten units or something, then it, there's still parking required.
So that's, that's beds per human.
Oh, okay.
So if you have like a seven, eight bedroom dwelling unit. Again, you know, I don't wanna sound anti-student, but that's typically like a friend house or a team house or something like that, and and we wanna make sure that there's parking provided for that. Most housing for families, they're like, you know, working people. You're not gonna have more than four bedrooms in a given. All right.
Yeah. Is I have a question? The one, the one uh in uh schedules uh. Let her age schedules three. Uh, the one, this is a little outside our scope at the moment, but since we're talking about parking. That one space provision for congregant living. Um, I actually know why this exists, I know why it's important, but I'm also starting to see unintended consequences, I think. Uh, I'm, I recall in a week or two ago, um, asking about some. Essentially a parking lot or a backyard, entire backyard getting. All of its vegetation stuff pulled out and regraded and it looks like we're gonna. Uh, pave it, they called us, surely this, they didn't, what's going on and? Nope, the owner had gone for a congregant living permit and granted through. Planning or Z P A, whatever the that process was and allowed for the to to meet their parking requirement, got there, basically their whole backyard paved. So I'm now worried about my neighborhood. On the west side, having every, you know, everyone who's trying to be a good doobie and and com- complying with congregant living in in the student district. Going to get, you know, essentially need to have their their backyard paved, I think it's gonna look like north of Maine where that's happened a lot already. And I don't wanna see that happen in all the blocks on the west side that are student, but we also have to balance that with the crazy on-street parking situation we have. I'm throwing this at you, Tito, I'm sorry, yeah.
Understand that I.
But it's like an on, it's like an immediate thing happening, yeah.
I do not think it's a good thing for bad guys to be paid, I think that's very bad, but we were talking before about. Having room for for public works and emergency vehicles on the streets.
Yeah.
By move taking cars off, and if it makes you feel better, there is a maximum lot coverage allowed. And there are landscape buffers required for parking lots of over four cars. And you can't pave your front, so there's a, you know, there's a limit to it. Uh, but it's, you know, I don't know, there's no easy answer.
Yeah, and. Yeah, it's, obviously, there the. Historical, historical like infrastructure where like most of these are like single-family homes, um.
So they got some single-family homes have five cars now, I'd say.
Yeah, like that, so the the infrastructure was never there to support five people with five cars. Type of situation, and it's like, should we? Encourage that or just try to get people to take public transit?
Yeah, but I I I'm.
A lot of students don't have.
Yeah, more and more do, it's 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 certainly trending up by, I mean, and and the students, everyone. Can go across the parking lot, I have a meeting with the county.
You need the parking lot, they will come.
Yes, it's true, the streets do.
So keep the parking lots away.
Well, I don't know, I'm just, um, this is a a very current concern that I see developing in my neighborhood.
I I will say that in a lot of cases, they can't. They don't have the room to pave, and so they either have to try to get a waiver, which a lot of times they get declined. Or or they have to reduce the number of beds that they're trying to put in the building, which is like a, you know, a good effect. Like that parking requirement limits.
Is dry.
How much they can chop up a house.
Right, I I guess I'm trying, I'm thinking of a lot of places that have already been chopped and you might have people that are trying to comply now and good thing.
Yeah.
And um.
No, that, yeah, that's.
Might not, yeah.
Issue.
Anyhow, that's slightly off topic, but I I guess something I'm, it's really in my mind. What about the other, I'm sorry.
I like, for for students, I. Would like there to be, I don't know, maybe a different solution to. Limiting their car usage, but I don't know if you can do that in. Parking required. You know. Like, I mean, if they have, if they'd be, if they're on campus, they're required to be on campus, like you can't have a. Car your freshman or sophomore year, like that could be done, done there, but like off-campus, it's not the same, you can't just be like. There's no way to enforce. You're a student, you can't have a car.
I think there, you know, there is, there has been talk of on-screen parking permits. I don't know, you know, I might get in trouble for opening that can of orange, but.
It's not crazy.
That's something that happens a lot before.
I'll go ahead and offer that I I don't think that my neighbors would be super pleased about having to have to pay to park in front of the homes that they own, so I. I'm not sure that that would be very popular.
Well, it might not even need to be a paid system essentially, or or a great nominee, it's not as long as it's a track system. Actually, I think it's crazy, so.
I think that the fees are generally to offset the administrative costs of facilitating a program like that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what what the answer is, cause if we reduce these parking requirements.
Oh, I know, I I it's it's a pickle, but I I'm 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 seeing unintended consequences of the pickle, that's all.
Rob, I also think there's something here, um, if, you know, if these are going to planning commission and zoning board of appeals, if you have constituents that have concerns. I think it would be good for those to be brought to.
Well, that goes to. The deeper issue of, you know, when we have applications, you know, required notices only to. How big? Two hundred feet, which in some cases on the west side means you're not finding the same owner. Anyway.
Well, in that case, the the impact would also be on that owner, I would imagine.
Yeah, but not, but but you. You're getting to a threshold where you're having characteristic of the neighborhood impacts, and if if if. Planning department or 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 the board, the planning commissioner is looking at this one thing and does it affect the character of the neighborhood, no, but the fifth and eighth and tenth time we do it. It is affecting the character of the neighborhood, but at that point, they get to say, well, my neighbor did it, the guy at the street did, anyhow. It's just that. Something's on my radar. Talking about the planning commission, uh, four ten forty-eight B. We seem to have. Limited planning commission review to only bulk requirements and not other site development conditions.
Uh, when the planning commission determines that special conditions or circumstances exist which make the. So. This limits the planning commission's authority to waive rules in the code. To bulk requirements, all other rules in the code, they cannot waive, the Z B A can waive them. Uh, but the planning commission cannot waive rules, they do have. They can't impose rules, they can influence site plans, they can say. You can't do certain things, but they can't tell a developer, you know, you don't need to plant your landscaping here because. We like your project. They can tell developer though, you can't make your building X percent taller because you made it the kicks and you don't have to go to the Z K. So this is cleaning up. This is cleaning up the language because we were challenged on this, where basically an attorney said. This is broad enough that the planning commission can let my client. Do their non-compliant project. And we were saying, no, that's not what that means. I forgot what what they didn't want to do, I think it was landscaping, the client didn't wanna do required landscaping. And their attorney interpreted that as the planning commission having the power to re- to waive required landscaping.
I mean, that's what, yeah, so what makes bulk requirements? Um, special.
There's sort of less discretion involved there, it's just like, i- if you want your build, you need your building because of site conditions to be closer to the. Eastern property line, the planning commission can look at that and say that's reasonable. This would allow the planning commission to sort of rewrite the code on the fly, all the other intents of the code and what we want the city to look like, they would have the authority to to modify. Um, versus just like, just numerical stuff, like you can make your building by the power. It it's just a little less subjective and, you know, you don't really want. The planning commission's great, but, you know, you don't want to to give a group that much power to just modify the code on the fly. The Z B A has the power to modify the code, but state law is much more strict with how the zoning board has to operate. The planning commission is a local thing, uh, giving them the power to to just do whatever they want. It'd be kind of crazy.
Thing. Stuff, something I missed was the. Got a note about the. The lot width for multi-unit in an R three. Two hundred?
Minimum lot width.
Yeah.
Is a hundred, if you have uh four or more units.
Can't think of. Lots like that. So there's, I feel like that there's very. Few opportunities for. Multi-unit based on that, but I could, I mean. I think you were saying like the typical lot is like fifty feet.
Yeah, if you go to the west side, a lot of those houses aren't fifty foot wide lots. So it would be basically two lots to build an apartment building. Two of those lots to build an apartment building. I do, I mean, we can look at the existing apartment buildings and and what the lot is on those. A hundred feet's not that wide, you know, on the ground, when when you're looking at, you know, a four or five-story building. Uh, but we can look at that, sort of what the existing conditions are. For existing apartment buildings. I know we have someone old in Chestnut, you know, uh, scattered around the city.
Right. Yeah, and honestly, I haven't had a chance to look at your email, and I know one of my questions was the. What determines, I mean, we're reducing the bulk requirements, um. By about half in a lot of these. Uh, but was there? Was there like a a look at the parcels that would be included versus? Excluded if we've. If it, if we moved it down another hundred feet, does it open up? Two hundred more parcels that would. That. So type of calculation.
So. The way I interpreted that is. Is. You were asking if. Right now, our lot size and things are making certain. Uh, vacant lots undevelopable.
Yeah.
And my answer to that is no, because. The code allows you to build on an undersized lot as long as you can meet the setback requirements. So any lot is developable, you would just have to, depending on the size of the lot, shrink shrink your bill. If you have a lot that is so small. Um, that. If you meet the setbacks, you can't build a building. Um. Then you can go to the ZBA and say. If I have to have a five-foot setback, my building can only be. Six feet wide. That doesn't meet the building code. Please let me build all the way to property line so I can have, you know, a ten-foot wide tiny home. And the ZBA, in that case. You know, that would be a strong application because. If they say no, that that lot now is undevelopable and the city can be sued for like a taking or whatever. Uh, we cannot render lots completely undeveloped.
Okay. Thank you. Hey. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's all my.
Thank you, this is.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Anyone from YouTube right now?
Do you have some questions that we're going to and how we're gonna do that? The co-op thing.
Yeah, how to include the co-ops? Where the three hundred twenty five square feet came from for even use. Uh. The typical width. Of lots that have apartment buildings on them. I think that's it. I gave you the, um, councilman, how it just the breakdown. Of land area. Occupied by the different zoning districts. Just one thing to note here. The default zoning district is R one. And so. You have a lot of land that is practically undevelopable. That's R one. Like on the hills of the south side. Uh. Like Mount Prospect. You know, the cliffs there.
Yeah.
Up on the east side of. Windy Hill, that area. Land that's undevelopable or very difficult to develop, and it's, you know, thousands of acres that's R one, so. Thirty-three percent of the city is R one, a lot of that is not.
Is it worth our time to? Pick those out and just call it undevelopable. Land or?
That gets, well, those are privately owned lots, so it kind of gets back to, we can't do that. You know. We have like that, we have to leave the.
Possibility that they could do something.
That they, I mean, and you could, like if it was San Francisco.
They'd make it work.
They would make it work because the property values.
It would just cost.
Yeah.
A few million dollars.
Yeah, a hundred million dollars to build on a cliff. Like, we can't do that in Dayton, but maybe in the future, we can.
Or that, I mean, just, I mean, just for planning purposes, say, how much of, how much land is actually out there that's? How many zone law, I mean, how many buildable lots we have, or what's our buildable lot item? I'm just trying to. Is that, that does make it look a little.
Yeah, with some of those lots, like up on Mount Prospect, there's someone that's trying to build a house. It's basic, most of the lot is a cliff with like nice adhesments with huge towers coming out of it. But there is a small patch. Where you could level that and be at the street and build a small house. So the lot is developable. But most of that.
X number of acres, it will never be.
Is R one, but you can't build houses there, you can, or you couldn't subdivide. Ninety percent of that lot. To build other houses, um.
Um, I think, uh. At the, our last meeting, we, uh. We kind of sent. These changes to the environmental commission for, you know, comment and feedback and stuff, and I don't think they've for- formally reported back yet.
That's on my to-do list.
But we have at least some, I, uh, some of the, there's a lot of specific things, but just some of the general things with, you know, we're we're spending time looking at this and making. Changes that are are, uh. Uh, this is a solution in search of a problem, I think, with some of the, some of the general comments and, but I I I, uh. And I'm one of the people driving this, so I don't. I think we're, I think we're trying to be. More proactive in this code and and looking at at what. What might be coming down the pipe, what development, questions we could be asking in the future. I think we're we're trying to, I would say, future proof the code, but I think at least. Ask in a proactive way.
That's exactly what you, and then, and then this also. I think gives the city points, if we're going after funding for to build housing. We can show that we've taken steps. To make the city more housing friendly. Um, and, you know, maybe the press releases can track developers too, and people come and go, you know, I, it. It's a good thing to do, even if there's not an urgency for these changes. In reality, it could lead to positive things.
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and and I'll second that by saying that a lot of times when we do these. Press releases about housing or development or being pro-development or pro-housing, I do get a a lot of inquiries as a result of those. Um, as a result of the mayor's LinkedIn posts. So these things do work and we do see leads generate from them and and some of those do pan out into real projects.
But I, yeah, and the other thing that. Was brought up is like, oh, if we're gonna develop all this stuff, now there's gonna be stormwater.
Yeah.
Issues and.
But.
But. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be like. Overnight, if we we pass this, you get two hundred applications and then like two hundred. Buildings go up that become.
We, and we do have controls for that too. We have urban runoff reduction plans that are required if you're building over a certain amount of square feet.
And I would love to, I would love that problem to solve. That'd be a great problem to have to solve.
But yeah, I I think this was a. A great conversation and meeting, uh, if anybody.
I mean, Nate, one of, one of the things we often talk about is like. The need for like data visualization and like how that would be helpful. I. I know for me, it it so continues to be kind of like, I'd like to see how. These proposed changes, like where they're actually impact like on some sort of a a map, like we're talking about certain things that are gonna disproportionately impact the south side. What areas of the south side, like. To have that kind of. And. Ability to try and go after and have conversations from the most. Impact, most likely to be impacted areas. Prior to. Making changes.
I have to chat, I love it. Yeah, good, but thank you so much, Theo. I will. Good in the weeds sort of.
But but that request, put that request out if there's. Something, some sort of simple visualization, that would be helpful.
But also, I think it would be helpful to understand if if there are any specific questions that you or anyone has, or if it's an area of town you're looking at, just. In thinking of, you know, trying to map across the whole city, I think just knowing where you're looking for would help us kind of right-size the ask and be able to deliver that in a more efficient manner.
Well, I mean, I care about the south side because that's where I represent, but I presume other council members would be curious about their districts. And where within their districts are most likely to have impacts.
It's gonna, the the. It's it's gonna vary depending on which particular rule change you're you're looking at. So.
Cause I, yeah, I feel like I wanna be educated about the areas, so that when I go to the neighborhood assembly and people are asking me about this, I can say. This is what we think is going to happen in these areas rather than just kind of a.
So the reason I mentioned the south side is because the lots are bigger, there's there's more opportunity to split those. With these new smaller lot size requirements. But that's, you know, that may never happen if people like their yard the size that it is, you know, it's just that it could happen now, um. So. And and that's gonna be the case for like every single rule change, like the height changes and and so on. So. I get what you're saying, the, but it'd be hard. To get you the information without. Because of the nature, there's very specific questions like. How would the height requirement changes impact the properties on best of ads? Our street A to cross street B, you know, and then we can try to get an answer on that.
Yeah, because for instance, we we could do a map that. We could do a map that shows lot coverage on every lot in the city, but what is the utility of that and how is that a potentially not a great use of staff time? So that's where, and we can look the areas on the south side, there'd be most impacted, it's gonna be East Hampton Road, it's gonna be South Mountain. So we could look at what those coverage requirements would look like, if you think that would help you answer questions at neighborhood assembly, but. I think just understanding where particular council members have questions, just so we're not, you know, going through an exercise that doesn't ultimately help you guys make decisions and takes up a lot of staff time.
I think this wouldn't be like the, along the same, uh. This would be for like informational, like that could go out with a press release, like these changes are happening, and this is a list of. Vacant lots that are in the city that are city-owned, and these are like vacant lots that are privately owned. Um. And now. You might be able to subdivide like. Maybe that would be too thorough. At least.
Yeah, council member, I just, I just.
Yeah.
I totally understand where you guys are coming from, but I just think about the amount of data that we would have to generate, sort through, and then put into a usable form. Like, I just don't know if the juice is worth the squeeze on that, so just knowing what the actual questions are, and then we can focus in on those areas, um. But I totally understand that, if we had, you know, all the time and staff in the world, I think that's how we would approach everything, but just trying to understand the limitations here.
Would you be able to, um, tell me how like certain parts of my district are currently zoned? Um.
On the planning. Planning website.
You're like, all right, here's. Almost all R one, I think.
Yeah, we could take a look at the boundary of your district and tell you, um, but yeah, it's good, you're good.
West side.
District two, it's.
That starts at.
No. It starts at Mal- like Millard to like Johnson City, kind of.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Johnson City all the way up until that border of Grand Park where they split.
Okay, and then, and then south to Riverside, north to what, Bain?
Yes.
Yeah, that's almost entirely R one, there's some R two, uh. Grand Boulevard, there's some R three on Floral.
Okay, yeah, all right, I, okay, I'm I'm gonna come in and talk.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are there.
Okay, yeah.
Are there sites in there that might become, might be eligible for the townhouse? Type of development, or is that highly unlike, like, that's like. The understanding of what's likely to actually happen within our district to be able to communicate with people, what this might actually do to them.
To your point, like Sarah, I agree that staff time is out of limit, but each council person does need to be able to speak to the data in their own district, and that requires. The comprehensive analysis of the city.
Yeah, we can do that, um. It's just we need like, we do need specific questions, so if it's like.
But all the rules don't matter, right? So like, I hear you that each rule draws a different. Set of data.
Yeah.
Outcomes. But. Then for each rule, each count, like. You you can see how it would be important for each.
So, yeah, that's, and that's to make my point, so whatever rule matters to. Uh, councilwoman Madabeski.
Well, I have R three, I have R one, I have different areas, I I don't, I'm not an expert in planning.
We can move, like, maybe we can sort of. Go back to council, figure out which of the rules there are most urgent for them to follow up on, just like in the immediate.
But I mean, I I feel like. The planning department is who knows what is most likely of these rules are gonna impact my district better than I do as a relatively new council person. Who does not have a background in planning.
Yeah. I don't know how. So like you have in your district. R one, and R, R two, and R three, let's say.
Yeah.
All of these. Rules could. In theory, apply.
Right, but that, I mean, that's the the thing is like, like, like you pointed out, that I have larger lots, so certain rules are more likely to apply in my district. Than in a different district, and I have, uh, you know, R, R three areas, so maybe some of the setback stuff.
Right.
Might impact there. Are there some streets where that are likely that there could be that? I don't wanna go chasing after stuff that, like, where it's like, that's not gonna happen, and you. With your mind and your knowledge of the situation, already know that that can't happen, so.
Right. So that the the lot size was the only thing that came to mind for the south side, was that, uh, other than that, there's nothing different for how this will affect the south side versus. You know, the west side or the east side. Um. The the only difference there is the last side, so, I mean, I could, I could give it some thought. Um. I can give it some thought. I I don't know, you know, I. I guess I don't know. Yeah, I I can give it some thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't not wanna do anything, just.
No, no.
Also don't know what they don't know.
So, exactly, so we're kind of like an impact, um. So like I could, I could dream up a lot of information to give you, um. But I don't wanna.
Yeah, I mean, well, I'm also thinking like in terms of past projects, like. The zoning board of appeals may have already been granting waivers on certain types of things in certain neighborhoods, and like this. Would. Maybe make it so that they no longer have to go to zoning of board of appeals on that street, you know, and we would expect like. As an example, so there might be things that you know from like what's currently happening. That. Would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable ask to go through some of the more recent variances that have been granted and speak to how this would, would or would not have resulted in that variance. Being needed to be pursued at all or anything like that. I think that's. Kind of a right-sized ask.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you, you're. Looked like you were trying to close the meeting.
No problem, uh, since we, yeah, I don't. I hope nobody else has any other thoughts.
I I just have one quick thing. I know budget's coming up, so I'm sure you guys are gonna be super busy. Um, so if there's any way that we can kind of pick a date we wanna back into on this, obviously, if people don't have enough information by that date, totally fine for us to continue pushing it out, but. I could just see this kind of getting lost in budget over the next two months, so if there's any way for us to kind of keep this moving through the process as you guys advance through budget, that would be very helpful.
Would this be going? To a work session or a business meeting after this, assuming you get satisfactory information?
Uh, this would be a second read, right? So it'd be going to business meeting, uh, no?
I think it would be first read legislation at this meeting.
So it just depends if it's, if it's signed now.
And if you wanted to get back to work session, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
I think Sarah, like, do you have like a? Hard clothes. That you. Like that I can calendar in, otherwise, I mean, I think the councils, like, y'all are gonna have to have a discussion about it, and it's gonna depend on the data that they get and whether.
Absolutely. I think, I think just looking at, you know, does it make sense for us to to kind of shoot for a business meeting in October, is November more reasonable? Just so we kind of know where things are, how much we should prioritize this with corporation council. Um, and just backing into a date, and then, like I said, if you guys feel like it's not ready, that's totally fine, but just keeps us moving towards the goal.
Meeting in November is November sixth.
Is that, oh, is that like election day?
I would love for it to go. September twenty fifth, if that's possible. You can, we can get. The answers to these in a couple days.
I know for me, I have my neighborhood assembly meeting third Tuesday, this one. I at least like to, you know, get out, no. The likely consequences on the south side, please speak at a neighborhood assembly.
It would be okay on October nine.
And, um. Do some door knocking on in, on the areas that we think might be most impacted.
Okay, do you wanna tentatively think about the first business meeting in October? I think it'll give the council enough time maybe to process the data, come back to you if they have additional follow-up questions, but it definitely meets your reasonability.
Yeah.
But I, I'm, I'm good with that.
All, again, all.
It's all based on. Council signing it out.
Yeah, but I'm gonna make a note in the minutes that. The anticipated vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will be the ninth, yeah.
Or the anticipated. That's the. Thinking.
Yeah, it's a spirit, that's mine, so.
You know, planning.
All right. All right. Any, any other thoughts?
No, thank you guys so much for the time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no, I don't, I'm I'm adjourning this meeting.
Cheers, thank you.